Good evening and welcome as I call the Order Regular School Board Meeting of Independent School District Number 882. It is 5:00 PM on Monday, September 8th. I'd like to note that Board Member Melissa Curtis is gone this evening, but we do have a quorum so we can continue on. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and now we will get approval of tonight's tentative agenda.
Second.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, or, yeah, moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. It'll take a second to get into the groove this evening. All right, we have no citizen comments this evening, so we will move on to item number five fiscal stability, and we are looking for a motion for our consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to collaborative connections, I will pass it over to Superintendent Olson to go over our acceptance of gifts.
Awesome. Well, I have four gifts here to bring forward here tonight. The first two go together, and the last two go together. So Eastview and Nature Based PTO gave $1,000 to purchase books in Spanish for the Magic Book Bus. And as a reminder, the Magic Book Bus is a task force as part of the Rally to Read Initiative that we've been partnering with in the community. And then another donation, Byron and Monica Martin, $250 to purchase books in Spanish for the Magic Book Bus. Once again, that's a Rally to Read Initiative. And then the last two also, the last two go together as well, as well. Rich and Jen Hanson, $6,000 for the staff welcome back luncheon, and Hoagland Transportation, $2,064.01 for the staff welcome back luncheon, and that was to cover the complete cost of the welcome back luncheon. We've never had a luncheon before. Normally, we have staff back on a different date, and so this was a very special event to be able to bring back all staff. 700 staff members were invited in the neighborhood of 600 came. There were some coaches and things like that that aren't on full-time status that weren't there, but we had over 600 there for this event, and it was a great welcome back. I think the highlight for me was having 150 students hiding behind the curtain as I gave the presentation in welcoming back. And we lifted up the curtain, and the students waved signs for pairs, education support staff, for teachers, for nurses, custodians, cooks. Every employee group got recognized, and what these students all wearing the same shirt. They were magic adventure students, was how I was able to pull that off. And it was pretty fun to see the staff immediately stand up and give it a round of applause for the kids. So standing ovation for the kids, and led to a luncheon that was a very fun, the luncheon was sponsored by Von Hanson's. There was other product donors there as well. Viking Coke did some product testing and some things like that, for some water and some pop and things like that. But those were the two monetary donations that came in to cover the full luncheon cost.
Therefore be resolved by Monticello School Board, 882 to Great Lakes South of Fond donations, Eastview and Nature Based PTO, $1,000 to purchase books in Spanish for the Magic Book Bus. Brian and Monica Martin, $250 to purchase books in Spanish from the Magic Book Bus. Rich and Jen Hanson, $6,000 for staff welcome back luncheon, and Hoagland Transportation for $2,064.01 for the staff welcome back luncheon.
Second. Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Mary Bartel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero on the extremely generous donations that impacted both students and our staff, which was awesome. All right, next is item number seven, Teaching and Learning. Help me welcome up Director of Business Services, Tina Burkholder, to go over our enrollment update.
First, look at enrollment. We will look at enrollment projections and how we did in November, but I just want to highlight kind of where we sit as this affects our revenue budget. So at our elementary level, you can see here we have grades K through five shown here. We have Nature Based, Little Mountain, Pinewood, and Eastview, all represented in different columns. But overall, we did run short. Kindergarten is down 25, and that's always hard to predict, just because, you know, there's, we have the 04 census that we can look at. There's births we can look at, and there's homeschool. There's all these different things that we can look at, but there's never an easy trend to kind of look at. Grades one through five, we were down overall about nine students. So where we're down the most is grades K through five. And at Pinewood, we do have a handful of students that are included in these enrollment projections, like five or six students that are served in our co-op programs at Pinewood. At the middle school, we're very close to projections, and we also have four online students that aren't dual enrolled. We have about three students that are dual enrolled between middle school and our online program. So very close there. And then at high school level, this shows our online as well as the high school slash ALP enrollment projection. So with the online, we have about 125 students that are dual enrolled between the high school and online. So only 48 that are not dual enrolled. Also in here, we do not include our high school co-op programs enrollment in here. We try to keep that separate as well. I forgot to mention the middle school, keeping that foundations one program separate, because we do staff separately for that. The last slide just has all the grades together, looking at what our enrollment projection was going to be, was at, 3,996 students, and we're at 3,097. So we are down, and this is just helpful to know as we look at where we're at for budget purposes, and how we forecast, how that impacts us moving forward. This could be 150,000 impact to our revenue budget. With less kids, we get less revenue, and that's why we always, I would like to have us to have a fun bounce beyond that minimum eight percent, so that we can take the hits, because we never know who's going to show up on the first day of school. No action tonight, just to review, and then we'll dive deeper into 10-1 enrollment in October, or November, and look at next year's enrollment projections. Any questions?
Tina, in your experience, do these numbers stay consistent, or you still see some change in them?
They'll probably be consistent. If kids aren't here for the first 15 days, they have to come off. So it's hard to know. There might be some in there. That's why we tend to look at 10-1 every school year, as that's a good base to look at.
Do we know how many students we lost to the new private school that opened up in Big Lake?
I'm not sure. I know we're trying to keep track of that in Infinite Campus when kids go elsewhere. But I don't know where we're at with getting records updated.
Go back to the slide with K through, what is it there? So you see like kindergarten 243, 248, 257, and then you see after that the classes significantly increased. Is that the norm?
So that's why you're seeing, with, so we have lower class sizes in our early grades, K through two, and our largest classes are at the high school. You can see at 10th grade, 357, 353, 372. So that's why we're declining. We have grades exiting over 370, over 350, and we only have 240 kids replacing that grade level.
Those lower three levels typically, are they that much lower, or is that?
That's just lower enrollment across the state, lower births, migration.
I guess I was just wondering if we've seen that in the past, and then they get to third, fourth, fifth grade, and then our enrollment jumps a little bit?
No.
Okay.
I can say, just from having longitudinal information as an elementary principal, I would say the graduating classes, when you add fifth grade at Little Mountain and fifth grade at Pinewood, were pretty close to trend data. So they were, if, you know, you were usually in the 300 somewhere, and when you added those two numbers. And so now with these numbers, it looks like, you know, at some point, we are, this declining enrollment trend is catching up with us. And like Tina said, I mean, kindergarten is one of the hardest and most challenging, because there are so many different pieces of data to look at. You can't just look at where they were last year in the grade level before, because preschool, you usually only get about half to, a little bit, a little bit more than half of the number of students that attend our preschool. There's a lot of different options for kids. And while that number remains strong, and we try to recruit at preschool level for students to attend our program, that is a definite trend that's always happened. You never get the exact same number of students in our preschool in comparison to our kindergarten. So there is no data to look at that's exact, like the other grades, or more exact.
Any other questions? No? Thank you for the thanks. All right, we'll move to item B, District Building Goal Review. Please help me welcome to the podium Director of Teaching and Learning, Laura Stebner.
Good evening, Chair Seaman, Superintendent Olson, members of the board. I'm off and running. I'm excited to be here tonight for my very first board presentation with you to talk about district goals and core priorities. This is the season of the year where we start to hear from our schools. We have fall presentations on school goals, and this is an opportunity for me to share a bit about the work that we did at our June admin retreat that informed the action planning and goal setting of our buildings. And so tonight, we're really going to talk about how we'll be monitoring our improvement this year through both leading and lagging indicators. And if you're unfamiliar with those terms, I'll kind of break those down as we go through tonight. So before we jump into the work that was done at our admin retreat and how it informed the work of our buildings, we just want to orient ourselves to our goals. These, this is the third year of these goals, so these are goals that you've seen before. The district by 2026 is working on improving K-12 literacy, raising proficiency rates to 70%, working on our attendance rates for consistent attendance at that 90% threshold, graduation rates at 95% for the four-year rate, and then that district-wide implementation of vision of a learner. So none of our goals, our district overarching goals are changing. This is the third year of these three-year goals, and this is what our, our buildings really are working to improve through the work that they do at the building level. But I want to use a couple of different analogies tonight as we think about our buildings coming in to share their plans for the year. And I want to start with a sports analogy. Now, I know there's lots of sports people in, in the audience, and different aspects of sports, but everyone kind of understands this metric. And so I want you to think about our district goals like our scoreboard. They're that number that we're trying to achieve. They're that metric that helps us know, did we hit the mark? There's a quantitative number we can see, we can point to, and we can say, we hit that mark, we did it. It's really that scoreboard, that end result. But our building level work, that our building principals, and our teachers, and our support staff, and everyone in our buildings, what they do every day, that's really like the playbook. And if you're a sports person, you know that that outcome on the scoreboard doesn't change unless you have a clear playbook, you implement it well, you execute it well. And so our buildings spent a lot of time at our admin retreat this June, really thinking about, what are those impactful strategies that they will be implementing each and every day in service of those larger outcomes? So rather than stepping back and saying, what additional goals will we set at the building level, we took an approach to say, our district goals are what we all work towards. Rather than setting additional goals, how can we focus on our playbook, our action plan, our strategies that will help us hit that metric on our scoreboard? And another way to think about this is through the terms leading and lagging indicators. So when we think about leading indicators, these are the things that have to be happening, have to be at the forefront, in order for those lagging indicators to change. And so we can expect student outcomes to change if we don't have adult practices in place. That are the known strategies that help change things for kids. So as we think about this, we, I want you to think about leading indicators as the practices, when implemented consistently, really drive outcomes for our students. That's where our admin team spent a lot of time this summer, thinking about, what are those pieces we need to have in place across our building in order for us to have our student outcomes change? And the student outcomes are really the results of the actions adults take, and they do take time to move. We know that we can't do something on Tuesday and say, now our fast bridge results are different on Wednesday, or do something in March and say our MCA results are different in April. Those practices, those leading indicators need to be implemented well, in order to see those student results change. And what ended up happening, as our admin team worked together, were some core priorities for those playbooks, if you will, really surfaced. And what was so fun for me as a new leader to this system, was to see how, even though our buildings really came at this work from their own building level, and I'll walk you through how we did this, and just in the next slide, the core priorities that our principals identified were really common across the system. Our principals are committed through their action plans this year to strengthening tier-one instructional practices across the board. They're committed to advancing literacy for all students, and the strategies that, that move that look different from Eastview to Nature Based to the high school. They're also really working on preparing for and leading standards and curriculum shifts. There are big, big changes happening in the world of state standards. The way that we approach mathematics is very different in this new set of standards. And our principals recognize that in order for our teachers to be prepared, so our students can be successful, we have to prepare, and we have to be able to lead those changes. Trauma-informed and relationship-based practices, if I've learned anything about Monticello, is relationships matter. They matter to our staff, they matter to our families, they matter to our communities, and our buildings didn't lose sight of that importance. Also, this idea of using data to drive instruction and engagement decisions, and improving student-family engagement and attendance. So all those, these aren't necessarily specific SMART goals that you're seeing. What you're getting a window into is that playbook, that action plan. What will our buildings do to help us move towards those goals that we've set? How we arrived here, how we arrived at these core priorities was through multiple steps. So I was really fortunate to be able to co-lead the admin retreat with Cindy Foshing. We were able to come together, to plan together, and it was an awesome way for me to sort of share the baton with her for that last part of, of her leadership, and to be able to weigh in and, and bring my influence as well. And I really enjoyed having that opportunity. Cindy and I started with a student data review, and our principals spent a long time looking at deep, deep data for behavior, academics, attendance, looking at graduation data, where that was applicable, and so really spent a good, almost a half day, really diving in deeply to what is their data telling them. But we didn't go to the action plan yet. We said, just wait. There's some other really important overarching plans, overarching goals, overarching vision, that we have to consider before buildings start building out their action plan. And so that was looking at our MTSS semi, which is a data tool that we use to assess how we're doing with the implementation of MTSS. Our EL and SPED departments put together beautiful blueprints for professional development to meet the needs of diverse learners, and we have our achievement and integration plan that lays out specific strategies for meeting our goals. So our buildings spent time there as well, to say, what actions am I seeing from my data? What actions am I seeing from these overarching plans? And then what's specific to me as a building leader? For example, kindergarten might have some really specific needs that aren't going to show up unless we have that opportunity for leaders to have some autonomy about how they meet the needs of their specific learning community. From there, buildings completed their action plans, and then I was able to take all those action plans, then synthesize, distill down, and look for those common themes, is, which is what gave you the core priorities you see there. And so even though buildings really came at it individually, the commonalities across buildings were there. These priorities don't encompass every single thing every building will work on, but they encompass the main strategies we'll be using this year to improve student outcomes. And this is how we will take an approach this year that might feel just a little bit different, as you're seeing the building presentations come through. And so we're going to think about another analogy around health, and how it's so critical for us to measure what matters. So I don't know about any of you, but I've had moments in my life where I've said, I might need to pay more attention to my health. And often, that can come with just getting on a scale every day, and saying yay, or nay, or it's the same, or what's happening. But it doesn't really matter how many times you get on the scale, if you're not measuring what matters. If you're not paying attention to that nutritious eating, the regular exercises, the quality sleep, the stress management. When those adult actions are in place, we can expect the outcome, the number on the scale, the number on the scoreboard, to change. And the parallel for education is, is similar. So we have these metrics. We have literacy proficiency, we've got attendance, we've got graduation numbers. Those are our outcomes. But our buildings will be paying close attention to the strong instructional strategies, the effective student engagement, the trauma-informed approaches, and really thinking about how are we measuring that those pieces are embedded in every building, in every classroom, in a consistent impactful way, that those leading indicators are measured, so we can see those lagging indicators come behind. What this means for your building goal presentations, as you start to see them in the coming weeks, is that our buildings will be anchoring their strategies to those district goals. So in the past, you might have seen a different goal. The middle school might have said, we have a specific goal. This year, you'll see much more This year, you'll see much more of, here are our strategies that anchor to the district goals. We're all working collectively for those district goals. And so the buildings will be detailing for you what strategies they'll be doing in service of those goals. Primarily focusing on those adult behaviors that need to be in place. And it really gives them an opportunity to share the good work, to highlight the strategies, to share, what does it really look like? What's our playbook for achieving what it is that the district has set forth as the vision? But we also know data is important. We can't just say, well, we're not going to look at data. And so in order to, to shift to that more playbook-based presentation, but still keep our minds on data, we'll include a supplementary data packet or tool as part of the agenda so that you'll have that opportunity to see very clearly, what's that numerical progress? What's the scoreboard at right now? Be able to ask questions about that as well. But what I wanted to do was front-load just a little bit today to help you understand what was the process our buildings did. And so as you see those building presentations, if they feel like they might have a little different vibe this year, that might, that's why, and it gives you that background to understand the process that we went through. Are there any questions I can answer tonight?
This is a lot, um, I'm excited, well, welcome.
Thank you.
So fun for you to be part of that. A question for you, so reading obviously has been a focus of the school district now. And we just implemented new curriculum. It's year two now that we're on. How is that working? And how, how was the vibe of how each skill, school felt about that new curriculum?
I think it's, as you know, the Read Act and the implementation of not only new curriculum, but new learning has been a huge lift for elementary teachers. What I think is a great win is that when teachers are going through their mandatory training, they're able to go to their curriculum and see, oh, what I've learned that is a high-quality instructional practice is here in my curriculum resource. I think that next step is really that work around connecting those two pieces in a, a maybe more intentional way. And so it's one thing to say, I've had this training, I understand what to do, and I've got a curriculum that helps me do that. But it's another thing to say, how am I, as an intentional practitioner, drawing from that training, looking at student data to modify and adjust? And when a curriculum's new, in general, the, the rule of thumb is it takes three years to implement that curriculum well. And so year one often is very much, what is this? How do I do it? Just trying to deliver. Year two is refining and growing practices. And year three is where we can really get much more detailed in how that implementation is going and the tweaks we can make based on student data. So kind of a long answer, but I think it's, it's hard to broadly say, how are people feeling? Because there was such a heavy lift. I think we see a lot of positives. We can guarantee our curriculum is aligned with the best practices. And so now we can do the work, which is often referred to "bridge to practice." How do we bridge our learning to our practices in the classroom? And that's what's really on the horizon.
This sounds really good. And you may have already answered the question. And I apologize if I asked this incorrectly, but a lot of your presentation dealt with the, the behavior of the adults in the room. What about the fact that students' learning is going to be independent sometimes of the adults' behavior? Have you, how are you taking that into account in all of this?
Yeah, that's a great question, right? You can't always control those uncontrollables.
Exactly, exactly.
And I think what this speaks to is really getting clear about what we can control. As schools, it doesn't always behoove us to spend a lot of energy and effort in saying, here are all the things we can't control. So no wonder this child is struggling to learn. But if we have those really intentional practices in place that aren't just academics, that are thinking about the social and emotional needs, the family engagement, then we can take a look at, how do we use processes like our MTSS process to really drill down and define how things look different for individual students who still aren't maybe having the success that we would expect? But by focusing in on adults and making that really, really strong and cohesive, that helps us create that wraparound support that we know students need. And then we've got another system, our MTSS system, that says, sometimes even all of those great plans, we're going to have kids that still need more, still need different. And that's where we're able to bring in a team of adults to look at data and say, what's that second scoop, third scoop, different approach to student needs? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, very much so. You sort of take, by doing this, we're sort of eliminating the adult as the part of the equation and focusing in on the student in a, in a, in a way, thank you.
Thank you for the great presentation. What's your confidence level that we're going to reach the 70% in reading proficiency?
I would love to be able to answer that when I've got a little bit more time under my belt. So what I, with just having the MCA data become public this last week or so, obviously, we had the preliminary and I've been starting to dig in. But I don't know that I've had the time to be able to unpack where we're at in the strategies to be able to give you a confidence level. I know that's not answering your question, but I would hate to stand up here and, and make something up when I don't feel confident that I've done my due diligence to answer that in a respectful and intentional way with integrity.
I appreciate that. We, we've focused heavily on transparency and integrity around here. And with the upcoming vote, I think if we can give some honest confidence level to where we think we're going to be at ahead of the vote, that might build some confidence in the community. So maybe in a couple, two or four weeks would be good.
I'll be back to do the district data presentation, so at that time, I think I can have a better handle on the confidence piece. Thanks for granting me the time.
Absolutely. What do you feel is strength of Monticello in the area that you're dealing with? And where is an opportunity or weakness that you're looking at?
I would say what struck me from the get-go as a strength is the, the real joy and commitment and dedication of the educators. And so I've worked with lots of educators throughout my career. And I think I've had an opportunity to work with a few teams, not, not every teacher. But I've really been impressed with the way people come to the table. They say, what can we do? How can we partner? How do we get better? I don't, I've not encountered resistance from teachers when I've worked with them on curriculum implementation, or pilot data, or goal setting, or standards work. I think the same is true for administrative team. They're, they're really eager, dedicated, willing, so collaborative. And so I think that's, that's a true strength. I think an opportunity for growth is some pieces that are more systematic. Being able to look at, how are we really ensuring that there is a clear pathway and plan for teachers to have the professional development that they need? Our buildings have gone through a great process, but there's only so much time. There's only so many minutes. There's so many priorities that are our priorities, the state's priorities, the community's priorities. And so an area for growth that I see is, is more of a systematic collaborative approach to big-picture planning around staff professional development in order to really look at the whole picture and ensure that we're not inadvertently or unintentionally creating maybe gaps for our staff in some of those critical areas for learning. And I don't mean that to say that there are gaps, but as I've entered the system, I've, I've noticed that I've asked some questions that have led me to say, oh, we could step back and do that piece collaboratively, and that might help us have a better, more cohesive plan for how we're working with our staff around their professional learning needs.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I like the red and black.
I know. Me too.
All right, do we have any other questions? Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we'll go to item number eight, Safe and Healthy Culture. Please help me welcome to the podium Director of Nutrition Services Laura Wacker Hansen to talk about our adult second meal lunch prices.
Hi. Just a quick update for you here. So tonight, we are asking board approval for increase on our lunch price from $5 last year to $5.05. This is the state-required minimum price for lunches. This is normally something we'd take care of earlier in the year, but the state was just a little late getting it to us this year. So just asking for approval on the increase in the lunch price by 5 cents for this school year.
Do you have any questions? If not, this is an action item.
Second?
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those please say no. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you for the update. All right, we'll move on to item B, our first reading of policies. Please help me welcome to the podium Director of Human Resources, Rob Daniker.
All right, Chair Seaman, members of the board, Superintendent Olson. We have nine policies that were reviewed at this month's policy committee meeting. The policy committee gathers the first, first Monday of every month to do our work. And we spend about an hour and 45 minutes doing that. The board members and all the participants of the committee take significantly more time to review all the policies before we bring them forward. And so just want to put that out there ahead of time as well. So we're reviewing these numerically tonight. All of these nine are brought to us through legislative updates. And we'll start with policy number 418, Drug-Free Workplace, Drug-Free School. The purpose of this policy is to maintain a safe and health, healthful environment for employees and students by prohibiting the use of alcohol, toxic substances, medical cannabis, non-intoxicating cannabinoids, edible cannabinoid products, and controlled substances without a physician's prescription. Specifically, the legislature, under the Exceptions article of this policy, the legislator, legislature made some changes that preclude the district taking action against somebody who is a participant in a medical cannabis program. And that's the most substantive change of 418. Any questions from the board at all? Seeing none. We'll move on to 501. This is the School Weapons Policy. The purpose of this policy is to assure safe school environment for students, staff, and the public. There were some minor recommendations from MSBA in terms of amending some definitions. So a more descriptive definition of dangerous weapon, also defining possession. Those were upfront. And then the major change was towards the end of the policy regarding active shooter. So it changes Article 7 from Reports of Dangerous Weapon Incidents to Reports of Dangerous Weapon and Active Shooter Incidents in School Zones. And so, for instance, include, would include any incident in which an active shooter incident means an event involving an armed individual or individuals on campus or an armed assailant in the immediate vicinity of the school. So it doesn't necessarily mean a shooting incident. It just means somebody who is armed on or adjacent to school district property. Any questions from the board on 501? Okay. Moving on to 503, Student Attendance. The purpose of this policy is as follows. The school board believes that regular school attendance is directly related to success in academic work, benefits students socially, provides opportunities for important communication between teachers and students, and establishes regular habits of dependability important to the future of the student. The purpose of this policy is to encourage regular school attendance. It is intended to be positive, not punitive. And so the legislature made a minor change in the statute, one of the statutes that affects student attendance. And interestingly enough, it's that they deleted or eliminated the idea of the superintendent serving as the truancy officer for the district. And that's actually with good intention. They, the legislature recognized it's good to have a kind of a chain-of-command approach and somebody specifically in that school building being accountable for the student attendance in that building. Any questions regarding policy 503? Okay. Moving forward to 515, Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records. The purpose of this policy is that the school district recognizes its responsibility in regard to the collection, maintenance, and dissemination of pupil records and the protection of, and of the privacy rights of students as provided in federal law and state statutes. The major change brought forward by the legislature in this policy, I'm sorry, that affects this policy, is that parent contact information is no longer treated as directory information. And so what that means is that school districts must treat parent directory information in the same manner as they do student directory information and increases privacy and protection thresholds therein. And so, again, that was the major change in aligning the rights of parents more similarly to the rights of students in terms of data privacy. Any questions from the board on policy 515? Okay. Moving forward to 516, Student Medication and Telehealth. The purpose of this policy is to set forth the provisions that must be followed when administering, administering, excuse me, non-emergency prescription medication to students at school. The major change here was that there was a legislative update in some of the language used around epinephrine, specifically in the statute and therefore in this policy previously referred to epinephrine auto-injectors. But recognizing that auto-injectors are one of a handful of methods to deliver epinephrine, auto-injectors has been updated or modified to more generally refer to epinephrine delivery systems. Any questions from the board on 516? Okay, moving forward. 523 is the next one. And I, just correction, eight of the nine were brought forward by legislative change. The ninth one is this one, 523. This is a policy that MSBA has had a draft model of for some time. We have not had a local version of this in Monticello, so this is a brand-new policy coming forward. The purpose of this policy is that certain policies, as contained in the school district's policies, are applicable to students as well as to employees. To avoid undue duplication, the school district provides notice by this section of the application and incorporation by reference of the following policies that also apply to students. And so in this case, there's five policies that are housed under the 400 series, which typically deals with employees. But those five policies could also be applied to students, which are typically housed under the 500 series in MSBA model language. And so these five policies are 413, which is harassment and violence, 417, chemical use and abuse, 418, drug-free workplace, drug-free school, 419, tobacco-free environment, possession and use of tobacco, tobacco-related devices, and electronic delivery devices. And finally, 420, students and employees with sexually transmitted infections and diseases and certain other communicable diseases and infectious conditions. Any questions from the board on 523 as proposed? Okay, moving forward to 534, School Meals. The purpose of this policy is to ensure that students receive healthy and nutritious meals through the school district's nutrition program and that school district employees, families, and students have a shared understanding of expectations regarding meal charges. Specifically, there's been some modifications at the state level regarding continued implementation of the free school, free school meals program for students. And so some modifications and some of the language pieces around that. But then also locally, Director Burkholder and Director Wacker Hansen brought forward some recommendations regarding staff meals. And so, for instance, a staff member who does not have sufficient funds will not be allowed to charge a meal or à la carte items until additional money is deposited in the staff member's account. Basically, the purpose being that we don't want to create a scenario in which staff members are running into the negative on their meals accounts. Any questions on 534? Okay. Moving forward to 602, Organization of School Calendar and School Day. The purpose of this policy is to provide for a timely determination of the school calendar and school day. In the last, most recent legislative session, the legislature amended the statute regarding school calendar. By law in Minnesota, schools must start after Labor Day unless there's some qualifying conditions. But for the next two school years, '26, '27, and then also '27, '28, Labor Day falls relatively late in the calendar. And so the legislature is allowing for those two years only that school districts that decide to can start September 1st or later. And so provides a couple of extra days ahead of Labor Day if school districts choose. The Monticello Public Schools has not made a decision on whether to access this opportunity or not. We're just recommending updating the policy to allow for it if the board decides to do so in the future. Any questions on 602? Okay. And finally, 709, Student Transportation Safety. The purpose of this policy is to provide safe transportation for students and to educate students on safety issues and the responsibilities of school bus ridership. This is a fairly significant policy. It's over 25 pages in total. And there is, since the board has last reviewed this policy- And there is, since the board has last reviewed this policy, there's been actually two different cycles of legislative changes that have affected it. And so there's significant changes within. Basically, in essence, just kind of clarifying different safety methods and expectations. And then also, the last 10 or so pages of our local policy, 709, really have to do with procedures for driving incidents. And just a helpful reminder that, Monticello Public Schools, we do not own our own buses, we do not hire our own drivers. We contract those services out to a local contracted vendor. But they are still beholden to the policies as we set forth. Any questions from the board on 709?
I don't have a question on 709, but going back to 501. Let's do it. It appears that under Roman numeral three, letters E and F match letters A and B. It would probably just be redundant.
Still getting there.
Or I should have waited.
Trying to keep everything straight. All right, I'm sorry, 501.
Roman numeral three definitions.
Okay.
A and B appear to be repeated in E and F.
You are correct. We will clean that up. They were simply, they were moved as part of the...
I figured. Thank you.
We will delete E and F when we bring it forward for a second read.
Any other questions?
All right, Chair Stephen, this was first read only. No action required tonight.
Thank you, Director Daniker. All right, now we'll move on to item number nine, innovation and leadership. Pass it over to Superintendent Olson to go over School Board Recognition Month.
Awesome. Well, September is Minnesota School Board Recognition Month, and I want to take a moment to publicly thank each one of you and for your dedication and your service. The school board members across the state, especially here in Monticello, put in countless hours, whether it be subcommittee work, the technical reading that go into preparation for making decisions, and then the subcommittee work of district budget and district policy. And so while your work is behind the scenes, it does serve as a guiding light for the Monticello School District. And so on behalf of the students, families, and staff, I would like to recognize and sincerely thank you for your leadership and truly be in the heart of Monticello School District. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and that brings us to a journey. At 5:44 PM, our next school board meeting will be September 22 at 6 PM. And this board meeting will be followed by a work session, which will start promptly in five minutes. Thank you for all of you that attended this evening.